Welcome everyone and call our June regular meeting to order. Joy, would you do the roll?
Mr. Wickliffe?
Here.
Mr. Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Beveridge?
Here.
Mr. McCune?
Here.
Ms. Schultz?
Here.
Ms. Felter?
Here.
Mr. Geary?
Here.
Would you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wait till you tell me I understand. Okay, we will go into 2.01 Public Comments. Brian?
At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name. Tonight, we request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. A staff person will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board, and if a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel and audio recorded as a matter of public record. Thank you.
All right, and our first speaker is Bexod Asher. Come on up to the podium.
Thank you for your time. My name is Bexod Asher. I am Sophia Asher's father. Last year, my daughter started kindergarten at Aber Creek Elementary School. After a couple months during the Zoom meeting with her teachers, her teacher mentioned that she might be a good candidate for the gifted and talented program. Sophia took different tests and passed it with high scores, and she started the program with her teacher. And during the talk with her, she expressed her feelings as how challenging for her to find a peers that understands her, and it was a bit of boring for her during the classes academically because she already know how to read, how to write, and math problems. So I and her mother did some research and asked her teacher if she can apply for the acceleration program. As she already know, reading, math topics, addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division. There was a committee consisting of five or six people who observed Sophia's progress in different perspectives, so academically, socially, emotionally. And Sophia took additional logic, math, and reading tests, and scores were high. When I say high, it's 99%, 100%, more than 85%. The recommendation was sent to the superintendent office. However, it was denied because Sophia's recommendation doesn't support the appropriateness of that decision. Basically, committee during the year, they observed Sophia in the classes and recommended for the, to do the acceleration program. So Sophia physically is the tallest girl in her class, and she was born September 28th, and it's just three weeks later than the deadline. And out of school, her friends are first and second grades. And just a quick question for me and as a parent was, if there is a procedure that the committee has to follow, why it hasn't been followed? And I cannot accept as a parent that the teachers, Sophia's teachers, she loves her teachers a lot, and they are doing a lot of additional work for her, personally for her, and it is difficult for parents to accept that they didn't know the procedures. So, and if it is the procedure, how it goes, basically, some school districts make a decision within the committee, but here in Olathe, it was sent to the superintendent office. So I would like, as a parent, somebody from the superintendent office participate in that Zoom meetings with the parents, with the teachers during the year, so they know what is happening and how it's happening. And when I said Sophia that she didn't pass, she was denied, basically, she was upset, of course, and she asked me what she did wrong. And it's difficult for me to, for a kindergarten girl, to have this kind of, to cope this kind of stress. But after three, four days, she was okay. She starts breathing again. She started doing what she likes. And I believe that this is the, I tried to explain to her, this is not her mistake, and it take a little bit of time for her to understand that, and hopefully she will come stronger. And I believe she is stronger than her dad. So this was my concern, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Not at this time. All right, our next speaker is Nancy Ingram.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you this evening. Our family moved to Olathe in 1989 when my husband accepted a teaching position at Olathe South High School, where he taught until he retired several years ago. We owe a great deal of debt and gratitude to the district and to the staff at Blackbough, Frontier Trail, and Olathe South, where our three children graduated. We have lived with the motto of the Lady Falcons teams of no regrets and together the best through the years. As a longtime member of the Olathe community, I joined other patrons through the years in supporting our schools, our district, our staff, our educators, as we all collectively supported what was in the best interest of the greater good. And sometimes that meant that we agreed to disagree. Just bring up the subject of boundaries in a vibrant, growing district. We sat on your committees. We supported the passage of the local option budget. We participated on site councils, PTO boards, and your district civic academy. We run focus groups on tax courses and help to elect school board members. We participated in groups that supported bonds such as Patrons for Quality Schools, Citizens for Excellence in Olathe Schools, et cetera. One of my favorite moments is having been a part of a group that developed the mission and vision statement that you are all sitting in front of this evening. And if you ever wondered who made sure that the word was italicized, "their future", it was me. I sat in a room with five men and was only female and indicated, "We need to make sure it's their future, not our future as we remember." Some of us were lucky enough to serve on the founding board of the Olathe Public Schools Foundation, which was another joy and something that I've appreciated doing for the past 25 years. That involvement is something that I will cherish forever. My point is, there are a lot of us out there who continue to care about this district. We continue to observe. We continue to be involved. Although without children directly involved, the children in the district are our children. The district will always be important to us because we care about the future of this community, and we recognize we all need each other. Serving as a trustee at Johnson County Community College has given me the opportunity to actively participate in board work in many ways so similar to the work that you do. Although I have always appreciated the work of the board, I have a greater appreciation for that time, thoughtfulness and commitment that you share on behalf of our students. The best part of working on a board is sharing the perspectives we all bring to the table and the understanding that we are united and serving our students well. Seeing the partnerships between the Olathe District and our community college firsthand has kept me in the loop and in contact with how we can continue to best serve one another again on behalf of our students. Our responsibilities further connect us as we work toward preparing those students, those energetic, enthusiastic, persistent, and determined students for their future. They have survived a unique 15 months. I've also often shared with our staff, faculty, and administration at Johnson County Community College that I don't know how we will ever thank them all for all they have done for our students this past year. And I would say the same thing for those in similar positions in our Olathe School District. But I want to also include you as board members in my thanks. This has been a year like no other. Joe Beveridge, Brian Geary, I've got them in a different order, Shannon Wickliffe, Kristen Schultz, Leona Felter, Brad Boyd, and Brent McCune. We've got a long history, Brent. Putting up signs in the middle of the night to support bond issues. I could share something special about each one of you, but I only have five minutes. We all share the love of our district and the Olathe Public Schools Foundation. But I thank you first and foremost for your years of service within our community. Being an elected official is not only an honor, but bears a heavy responsibility. We will continue to count on each of you to give your best, to come prepared, to listen, to discuss, and to decide, and to vote. And I will also add, collaborate and reach consensus. NPR had a wonderful interview this morning with Dan Glickman. And if you've not been familiar with Dan Glickman, he served on the Wichita School Board, rose to represent us in Congress, and became a Secretary of Agriculture. And it's a wonderful interview, and I hope you will have the opportunity to hear that. Thank you to Mr. Allison for your leadership over the past four years. You listened when I spoke of ideas to ensure our students who have received mental health services through the Olathe School District would transition with certainty to Johnson County Community College, other institutions of higher education, or into the workplace, knowing where to access additional support. And finally, Dr. Jaeger, our past across many times throughout the years, you've always put students first, and I thank you for that. With sleeves rolled up, we are ready to support you as you lead the district into its future and a long-awaited breakthrough. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those kind words. All right, our third speaker is Brian Connell.
Good evening. I'm actually going to start with the end, the last thing I wanted to say first. This is CPR and AED Awareness Week. This is an AED. If you're not familiar with and don't know how to use it, you need to make it part of your job. It is state law in Kansas that kids know how before they graduate to do CPR and use an AED. According to the state, there was a 90% drop-off in kids that were actually certified and registered that they had actually accomplished that during the last school year. So there's a lot of making up to do. I carry it because my kid died on a pitching mound. Because somebody in the community knew how to use it, because I didn't at that time. He's alive. I want to make sure I call that out because that's very important to me and my family. I am Brian Connell. My kids have been in Olathe schools since they started kindergarten. My son and his friends graduated as part of the class of 2021 at Olathe West a couple weeks ago. Thank goodness. My daughter attends Olathe North, and she'll be a junior next year. We are public school people. My cousin's a school principal. My in-law's taught public school for 30 years. We have supported, volunteered, and raised many, many thousands of dollars to ensure our kids, their classmates, teachers, and the community have the very best available to them. Amazing people have been their teachers, nurses, librarians, coaches. These amazing people have remained amazing even as the schools and our school policies have changed around them. And that's unfortunate. Parents and teachers are mad, and they are getting madder. And I'm here for them to be their voice without retribution to them and their positions. You might recognize this next quote. "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men," and today we would have written that as "all men and women," "are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." This was written by some amazing human beings several hundred years ago to bring us together, not divide us, bring us together with a vision of a better life. In that Declaration of Independence, they went on the list 27 physical known grievances for King George and the existing government. Now, King George and his representatives refused to listen. When leaders, elected officials, and government entities repeatedly refuse to listen and act on behalf of those they rule, then big changes will take place. Elections have consequences. President of the United States a couple years back said that. Elections have consequences. And this summer and this fall, school board elections are coming. Over the last year or so, this group of leaders running Olathe schools have chosen more often than not not to listen. Even though you asked their opinions, you chose to do something different. And you chose not to act and not to lead when the community spoke to you. And here we are ending one school year and about to start a new school year. And I implore you to communicate better, listen better to each individual in their own individual circumstances. And act more expeditiously to serve kids first in Olathe, to serve families and parents, to serve the teachers, the school staff, and serve the community by really listening and acting. The first thing I'd like to encourage you all to do is step up, show up, and speak up with a simple statement. Instead of the legalese, gobbledygook, and over-base statement that masks, about masks have circulated this week, I challenge you to listen to your community and say it simple, say it clear, and say this. Effective immediately, there are no more mask mandates in Olathe schools. It's simple. It's easy to the point. Those of you who have gotten to know me know me. I'm fairly transparent. I'm very comfortably dressed. I wear my kid's baseball jersey. I'm telling you what I hear and what I see. With that, I want to leave each of you with a thank you. I know it sounds odd. Dr. Allison, you have spent many hours with me off the record over the last year, speaking, listening, learning from each other. So many things I learned from you that I cannot get from the school board, cannot get from the principals, and could not get from the community. And I honored you by not putting all that out in the public. And I want you to know, I really appreciate that time. For those of you on the board who have responded to my emails, thank you. That's just acknowledging that somebody's here. To those in the schools, your teachers took a leap of faith in February, March, and April to get the vaccines, and then you all kept the masks on their faces, and they are very unhappy. They took a leap of faith for all of you all who said, "Do it!"
Mr. Connell, your time's up.
And then you didn't.
Yeah.
Our next speaker is Kathy Winters. I would prefer if you didn't.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Beveridge. Can we remind our speakers that they address their comments to the board, not the audience, please?
Okay.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
It was regarding the last speaker. Just address the comments to the board, not the audience.
I have spoken to the community for a full year.
Mr. Connell, Mr. Connell, sit down. You'll be removed. Mr. Connell, this is not your time to talk. Sit down. Mr. Connell. Mr. Connell, sit down. Sorry about that. I haven't started your time yet.
I'm not offended by him.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Kathy Winters. I'm a grandmother of 22 children, grandchildren and great-grandchildren. I have six generations here in Olathe, Kansas. This is, my granddaughter lives with me. My great-granddaughter lives with me. She's eight years old. She was having nightmares. She wanted to sleep at the foot of my bed, at the, on the floor beside my bed. Couldn't understand why she was having the nightmares. I talked to her. She said that there were some kids bullying each other. And I asked her, "Why were they bullying each other?" She told me that there was a video showed. Third grade, eight-year-old kids in the class were shown a video of George Floyd's death. They showed a white police officer fighting with a black man. She said that it showed, the teacher said that the black man died and that he was a family. He had a family. I looked at the video that was shown. It showed a lot more than that. It showed violence. It said that, it said, it showed racism. I believe it was critical race theory. It showed that to eight-year-olds in the third grade. I was very upset, and when I notified people in my area and other people that I have talked to since then, no one knew that they were showing these videos to children. These videos should not be shown to children. They shouldn't be. It's critical race theory right here in Olathe, Kansas. I've lived here a long time, and I've never seen anything like this in school. Politics has no place in the school system. In today's atmosphere, it's a tinderbox of hate regarding race, police, disrespect for others. The schools and the teachers should not be indoctrinating these children and doing anything that would encourage this type of behavior. I even talked to the principal, and he said, "Yes, we do have a lot of bullying and fights in school right now." In elementary school, I read the standards of the state for elementary teaching, and it, there was nothing in there. Allowing the teachers to show videos regarding racism, hatred, and disrespect for police officers, or hatred of people just because of the color of their skin. Also depicting violence, destroying things, and that was in the video. And they mentioned the race of the officer, the race of the man. My granddaughter's not having nightmares anymore. I don't even watch, let her watch the news. These children should not be worried about anything except doing, learning math, reading, you know, spelling. They shouldn't be worried about these things. They should be taught more tolerance and love for each other. You've seen those videos of that little boy, these five-year-old little boys, that one was black, one was white. Why not show those videos in school where they're running together and hugging each other? What's wrong with that? Wouldn't that be more appropriate to show those videos? Also, when you hired a teacher on that application, does it say there that they are, you know, should be showing videos of racism? You know, showing racism, hate, and indoctrination of critical race theory and hatred of police officers who they should be respecting? I'm retired from an area police department. I know the stress they're under. And what are these resource officers, whenever they're at schools and these kids go into the school, are they going to be scared of these police officers? And you know, if there is problems in the school of bullying and fighting and everything, don't you think the school is a big part of this problem when they show these videos? And these little kids, and if these kids, these teachers, if kids are having any problems at school, maybe those teachers need to tell the children, "If you have anything that you're concerned about here at school, go home and discuss that with your mom and dad." Every person, and you wouldn't believe it, even a congressman, that I, a person that worked for a congressman, she said she didn't even know they were showing videos to Olathe school, type of videos like this. She said she had children in Olathe School District, and she had no idea that they were showing these. And she said, "Thank you for exposing this because they did not know about this." Do you realize what you're doing to these young kids? Why aren't you notifying these parents about this? I, this is my fourth generation of kids going to Rolling Ridge School. I don't, I want my two grandchildren, that are going to be living with me this year, to go to Rolling Ridge, but they will not be going if you're going to keep sending these videos. You have no right to damage my grandchildren's lives with racism and hatred for the people they should honor and respect and want to be when they grow up.
Your time's up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to say one more thing, if you don't mind.
Quickly, please.
I have a nonprofit organization for the last 13 years. And I have, it's to keep children out of foster care and with grandparents. And I've helped more people that are of black race than white. And I don't ask them, when I talk to them on the phone, "Are you white? Are you black?" And that's the way it should be. You should take care of everybody. My granddaughter is engaged to a black man.
Thank you.
So it doesn't matter. It shouldn't make a difference.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our public comments, and we are on to action other COVID protocols for the 2122 school year. Mr. Allison?
Yes, what I'd like to take an opportunity to tonight is to walk through the recommendation. But start with a little historical perspective. As we've worked, school districts, as communities, businesses, all of us dealing with a global pandemic, we've tried to make decisions as best we can based on the information we have at that point in time. And as this board wrestled with the issue of how do we handle COVID with our students, knowing the importance of having our students in school and receiving a quality education, we relied on expert guidance and did not just take a single set of guidance, but worked with looking at information from the CDC, the Kansas Department of Health, the Johnson County Department of Health, Children's Mercy, Mark in Others Group to look at what was the guidance for schools and to try to balance that guidance with what's in the best interest of our community. And this evening, what I bring to you as a proposal for the 2122 school year, and as you can see here, based on where we are at this point in time with some new limited guidance, and I would say first and foremost that neither the CDC, KDHE, or JDHE have come out with guidance for schools specifically. That will occur later in the summer as they step back and take a look at the data that they've collected from schools, not only in the county, the state, and in the country, as they prepare that guidance. But given that those conditions continue to improve, that immunizations continue to be made available to broader segments of our community, and that community transmission remains low, that at this point in time, we would look at the following aspects. And this is not comprehensive, but I think establishes, as we've heard, as we prepare to move toward the first part of July in enrollment, to address some of the questions that have been brought forward. So first and foremost, face coverings will be highly encouraged but not required for staff, students, and visitors. Pretty straightforward. Visitors will be allowed on campus according to our past visitation rules. Staff and students will continue to be expected to wash their hands throughout the day and whatever other guidance is given around sanitation, and that includes district cleaning protocols. Just in the last month or so, there's been some guidance that has changed as they looked at, you know, we can all remember early on during the pandemic, the concern about contact with surfaces and pens and those types of things that could lead to contracting COVID. We know that's a very limited possibility. But as we look at continuing to disinfect and clean, follow those sanitation protocols, in many cases, that's also recommended, bringing in more fresh air and air circulation, so continuing to follow those. Parents and employees will continue to be required to confirm positive cases of COVID-19 to the campus administration or their supervisor, and that based on the quarantining guidelines for individuals with a positive case, that we would follow that guidance. We will continue to notify parents and employees if their children have been directly exposed to COVID. And that, you know, as a reminder, we're also providing a virtual option for parents that do not believe these protocols are appropriate for their students to attend school. So there will be more guidance that the district will bring forward for your discussion as more becomes available. as more becomes available from a number of these groups and that we'll be able to do as we have, which was to evaluate those and make the decisions that are best for the Olathe community. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions regarding the recommendations we have for you tonight.
I had a question, Mr. Allison, on here that doesn't specifically talk about the quarantine for exposure piece. I'd like to see if you guys have had meetings related to that and where that stands first and foremost.
We've had conversations with the county at this point in time. They have not altered their guidance. I do believe that you're going to get information both from the federal, state and local level regarding quarantining for exposure later this summer. And I think at that point in time, it's very appropriate for us to take a look and see what that policy and procedure would look like. My feeling is in those conversations and information that's been sent to school districts, that there'll be some fairly significant changes to potentially to that approach. And I think it would be prudent for us to wait and see what that guidance looks like and then make a decision prior to the start of the school year on how, as a district, we would approach that.
Yeah, I strongly agree if we have some, I know this isn't all encompassing, but if we do get some of that, I certainly think we need to visit that piece at some point down the road. And the last other question I had, a little bit related to this, is I had some questions from different constituents and parents about the parent view listing of vaccines not included COVID-19. Can you address that? Like, is it?
The vaccination list that's available under parent view contains both required and recommended vaccinations. So depending on age group, the COVID vaccine is a recommended vaccine. It is not a required vaccine. And we have both required, recommended on our listing. It is not inclusive of all vaccinations. So you think about smallpox or anthrax or any of those. So it's not an exhaustive list. But as we've had, parents begin to look at the immunization and turn in their immunization records even in the spring for those high school students toward the end of the school year, that it was, they were of age to be able to get the vaccine. We felt that followed our past practice in adding to that list. It becomes an opportunity for a parent to submit. Other than those required, any submission to any of the recommended vaccines is completely optional for a parent.
Okay.
Does that help clarify that a little bit?
Yeah, I think so. Thank you.
I'll open it up to questions, but I just have a follow-up question. I mean, that's, the vaccinations has been common for how long in Kansas? I mean, recommended and required vaccines?
A long time.
Long time, okay.
As long as I can remember, so 35-plus years it's, there's been a required list and I'm sure it goes beyond that.
All right. Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Allison, the last count, we had zero staff cases of COVID and 12 positive cases from our student population. I'm assuming that these plans are based on those numbers and also the level of community spread. If those numbers were to change, then we will also alter our plans and how we will protect kids?
Correct. Based on those assumptions, we looked at our data for really the last six to eight weeks of the school year, the community spread currently right now, all of those are factors. And as we should, should those change in any one direction, then we should reconsider how we approach it. Yes, sir.
Any other?
Yeah, and so are we, are we going to do, how will we accommodate a family's preference for their child to wear a mask when they are optional but highly recommended? Is that going to be a partnership between the teacher and the parent? Can you give a little parameters there and then speak a little bit to how we're going to appropriately educate our children on, okay, it's been a dynamic situation and whatever your preference is, mask or unmask, it's okay and no bullying. How are we going to corral all that? If you'll speak to that, that'd be great.
Sure. You know, the first piece is we try to approach that cooperation between decisions that our parents make and our students and our staff. Just as we did the beginning of this school year, as students began to transition back into school, we worked with students to talk about the protocols and those types of things that would be different for them as they enter school. And I would see the same with masks. Working with our staff when they return as part of our professional development as we prepare for the beginning of the year, to talk about how we're going to honor and respect those decisions that staff and students make regarding mask wearing and other aspects. You know, we don't tolerate bullying for whatever reason. Masks would fit into that. And it's really about the conversation we can have, that it's okay if you choose not to. And if you choose, that's your choice. And just like picking the color of shirts you're wearing to school, that's a decision you made and that'll be a key part of our return to school with our staff and teachers. I talked to a teacher the other day who said they, as they saw this on the agenda, that, you know, why, they did not intend to wear a mask when teaching, but they might for the first couple of days, just for any students that might want to. So I think people are already thinking about, how do we do this? How do we honor those choices that would be made as we start the school year? And that'll develop more over the next couple of months. But definitely it's on the forefront. And I know Dr. Jaeger has already started contemplating how do we do that and make the beginning of the school year, you know, a smooth start and hopefully a return to normalcy.
I think this generation will have a skillset that we didn't necessarily have prior to this, being nimble, changing on a dime. I mean, because we've had to do that in this world. So definitely I would love to cultivate the acceptance of anyone's preference on masking. And I had a daughter that carried an EpiPen to school and, you know, I mean, that's inconvenient, but you can hide it in a fanny pack. So it's a little on the down low, but it's very similar. The teacher would have to say, dear, of your EpiPen before recess. And so that's kind of how I'm thinking of this, you know, a mask. And I don't want to unduly burden though our teachers with being the mask Gestapo. So we've got to find a really good way to educate and collaborate with our families, but empower the parents to make the decision now that spread is under control.
All right. Any other questions? If not, I entertain a motion. I ask for a motion.
Move to, excuse me, and move to approve the listed COVID-19 protocols for the 2021-2022 school year, including optional masking for staff, students and visitors, continued enhanced sanitation protocols, as well as making adaptations should there be an outbreak within our school community.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wickliffe, second by Mr. McHugh.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
All right. And moving along to action consent, I know Brian has a question. I'll let you go ahead and then.
Yeah, I had a question on 4.11, the MOU with the ONEA. I don't know if John or, I was just, or Dr. Jaeger, whoever.
Albers was.
Mr. Albers, yeah. Sorry. I wanted just to kind of, I was looking through there, some of the schedules. I know we've heard from a lot of students in the last month about the Power 50s, the Raven 50s, that, all those that, and I noticed those aren't included in this next year's school day calendar and just going away from block or to all that. And just, could you talk through how we came to the decision to have this out there and what that looks like, just for our sake, if you wouldn't mind?
Yeah, absolutely. I appreciate the question. Let me talk to you a little bit about the process that was undertaken this spring to arrive at what we plan to use for next year for our schedule. There were two separate surveys given this spring. That first survey was the garner feedback from staff on the block schedule that was used this past year, what they liked and what they didn't like about it. And then that staff feedback, along with feedback from principals, building leaders, students obviously, as you said, other stakeholders regarding that block schedule, was used in and working with principals and then professional council to create two different versions of bell schedules that would be a possibility that were then voted by, voted on by teachers in a second survey. So they chose amongst those schedules. And so then that bell schedule that was voted upon and approved by teachers is the bell schedule that is included in the MOU that then was voted upon again and approved by the teachers as well. The bell schedule that's used next year, that will be used next year, is very similar to our traditional bell schedule. It was used prior to this year in that it includes three seven-period days and then only two block days. So it goes kind of back to what we were doing prior to that. The, you know, with the requirements that we're going to be operating under as far as academic intervention time, MTSS, some of those other things we've talked about, state regulations and things like that, there is a structured and scheduled academic intervention time within those days and the bell schedule that complements, it runs consecutively and is a part of our advisory seminar period, which is something, again, we've had in our previous schedules as well. And as a reminder too, the schedule is part of the MOU that is just for next year, the 2021-22 school year. All right? So then going forward and looking to the future past next year, there's going to be a committee set up, formed as school starts, to really look at the high school bell schedule going forward to see what, if any, changes we could make to make sure we're serving our students' needs as best we can. And that committee is going to take a look at, obviously, research and data, solicit community feedback as well as other feedback to ensure the schedule, whatever we use from there on out, puts us in the best possible position to ensure meeting the needs of our students and then obviously as well, academic excellence also. So that's kind of the process that went through and getting feedback from people as we looked at what we used this past year and in previous years, to come up with the schedule for next year. And then also knowing that we're going to do a comprehensive study with that committee to see what we use going forward.
So if there are people out there, community members, whatever, they're interested in kind of taking part in that, is that something they just reach out to enjoy our district and let somebody know or their school building leaders or something? Because I know that, I mean, it's a topic that's going forward will be something that's pretty important. And I know there's a lot of options that are out there and we've tried several, but is that the best process for them to get involved or?
Yeah, when that committee gets formed in the fall, we'll put out some ways that they can get involved, whether it be through site council meetings and different ways like that or direct involvement with the committee or surveys or whatever that looks like.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Any other?
I just have a quick question on 4.10, the virtual school. Could you just give us a little bit of an update on the registration and how it went earlier this spring?
So the virtual school registration actually has been extended several different times. And, you know, when we initially shared information about Olathe Virtual School, we talked about, you know, the large number of staff members that had already indicated interest in those kinds of things, which was exciting and great. The student interest and excitement was not as great as the staff interest and excitement. So at the last kind of closing date for the virtual school, in terms of registration for that, we were just shy of 300 kids. 300 is about what we need in order to operate a fully functioning school. So we're at a good spot in terms of providing that for our community and our students in Olathe. With the decision tonight to approve changes and, you know, masking and those kinds of things, we actually, as part of the communication, will be sharing that we're going to reopen enrollment for virtual schools. So based on the decision from the board tonight, community members that now want to make that choice will have that option and we'll leave that open until, I think, about July 10th for families to do that. So we may pick up a few more at this point too.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions? 4.01 to 4.11. If not, make a motion.
I would move to accept action items 4.01 through 4.11.
Second. Motion by Mr. McHugh, second by Mr. Geary.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
All right. And then we're on to action bids, contracts, agreements.
I'm going to recuse myself for this one.
Yeah, we'll address 5.01 while. So are there any questions on 5.01? If not, would entertain a motion?
Can I just speak to the beautiful asset that Kids TLC is for not just our community but for Kansas, period. The kids of Kansas benefit from our partnership with Kids TLC, the lack of resources in rural areas, and we help a ton of kids. I wish I had asked Shannon before he left for an enrollment count, but I'm so proud of this ongoing partnership, the early intervention, the strategic investment in intervening and working with children living with autism. It's an honor to be able to partner with Kids TLC and to have them here in Olathe in our county seat in our school district. So we just had to brag on that.
Thank you.
You want me to make a motion? Anybody else? Okay. I move to approve the salary reimbursement agreement with Kids TLC and Olathe Public Schools for a term of one year as presented.
Second. Motion by Mr. Felter, second by Mr. Boyd.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Would you mind, Dr. McCallum? So I have one question, but I'll ask if other people have questions about 5.02 through 5.13.
I have one on 5.02.
Okay.
So Dude Solutions has changed the format of their invoicing. And in looking at what we had as part of our subscription last year versus where we are this year, there's some changes and there's a significant increase. So I'm trying to figure out what that's attributed to.
They went through a major upgrade of their software, cloud-based, essentially a full rewrite. One reason, it looks like it's a $30,000 increase because there was a $10,000 module that was built at a different time that didn't require board approval last year. The big, otherwise, the individual modules really didn't go up. It's the main one is about a $20,000 increase. The, we explored some other softwares. This is kind of the one that handles all our IT and work order systems. We'd be happy to explore them in the future, but the pricing actually was still attractive for school dude versus the other.
It looks a little bit like there was a previous kind of à la carte approach to what we put together and now things are bundled a little bit more.
That is correct. There's very few extra modules that you can purchase. It's all rolled up into one. And we were, I'll call ourselves a super user. There is actually one piece that we kind of helped drive, put it back in. Example is we get thousands of work orders for our buildings. We'll have the ability to kind of route that towards a capital campaign. Like that is a large one. We have to look at that separately, but it keeps all the information. So we're building that capital improvement plan along the way. That's kind of one of the major improvements. But yes, it is a significant increase from the priority.
Thank you.
I have a question, 5.04, the Edgenuity software. Is this taking the place of the health aspect of that or the entire PE program for freshman students?
Excuse me, sorry about that. It is not just the health piece. It's also the, it's all related to PE and health, but it's just the opportunity for kids that choose to use Edgenuity for their PE credit to be able to do that. Makes sense?
Dr. Jaeger, will all kids be using the Edgenuity for high school for health?
Yes, correct.
Not just for PE, but they'll all be doing their health module, the online health module?
Right, correct. That's correct. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I probably misunderstood the question.
But in addition, there's a great deal of other coursework that's available.
That's correct. Yes, yes.
Is this what we use in, we're going to pull together. Is this what we use for credit recovery as well?
We use Edgenuity for lots of things in our district. So yeah, credit recovery, we also use it for, as the example I gave before, kids that are looking for space in their schedule, many times they'll take PE using Edgenuity over the summertime, that kind of. kind of thing. But it is our consistent way that we utilize for health curriculum in our ninth grade courses. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions? I was going to ask, I'm not sure who this would be addressed to, but 5.08, the hotspot devices. If somebody could kind of talk about the difference between what we're doing this year versus last year.
So we, this, last year, we looked at several options, and we did the same thing again this year. We did look at T-Mobile last year as an option, but we weren't available, we weren't eligible for the Project 10 million because they ran out of applications because of COVID. This year, we qualified for that, so it's a significant discount compared to what we paid for the Kajit devices last year. So, so there's that part of it. And then T-Mobile also didn't have the mobile device management system that Kajit allows us to track the devices, control, make sure that they have the filtering system on there. So all of that's now with T-Mobile that we didn't have that option, excuse me, last year.
Okay. And this will be available to kids in the fall?
Yes, that's why we had to skip the future so that we could procure those devices.
All right.
It's a significant savings.
Yeah.
And we're not purchasing the devices. They're actually giving us the devices, and then we are subscribing to the plan.
Right, and we're not paying for the data. We actually get unlimited.
Unlimited.
So last year, we had to control the data, and this year, we have, with this, with this Project 10 million, we actually get unlimited on all of our device.
Terrific. Thank you.
What, you want the estimated savings is, or?
About $600,000.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions? 5.02 to 5.13. If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve action bids, contracts, and agreements, 5.02 through 5.13, as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Boyd, second by Ms. Schultz.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Velter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Wycliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
All right. And on to future action items, list 6.01 through 6.13. And then we have our information written, the May Head Start Director's Report, and on to topics for discussion from board members.
I...
Anyone have anything?
The only thing I would say, I mean, we had a small thank you, but I know, Mr. Allison, I just want to publicly thank you for your service to the district and your friendship, and you're leading us through a lot, a lot of different things and teaching us, as Joe made in the comment earlier about making us better board members and better people. I think you've done that for us, and I appreciate that and your friendship. So thank you for all the time you've spent here.
All right. Well, I guess this would be as good a time as any to bring out a gift here.
I walked and set that up perfectly.
So we will hand it over here. It's kind of heavy. Take it off inside.
Yeah, definitely.
This is not your typical award.
I saw that, too.
So you got a brick from the school.
Peace of the Ed Center, along with our hearts, thank you for your service to Olathe Public Schools from your friends in Olathe. Thank you. All right. I will keep my comments brief this evening. This is my last board meeting as a superintendent. And as this day approached, I typically don't get emotional, but it's, it has been more difficult than I thought. For 35 years in education, but just a few thank yous this evening. First to the board. Had the opportunity to work with a number of school board members over the years, and this is an exceptional group. You all had the most difficult volunteered unpaid position in America this school year, and every other elected body kicked the can down the roads to their local school boards to have to deal with the difficult decision during this pandemic. And it's not easy, because it didn't matter what decision was made, there were going to be folks in favor of it and folks against it. And you continued to try to provide that focus, make decisions on the best information you had available in what was in the, the best general interest for our community, and did an exceptional job. Much like the school board, I've said so many times, Olathe has a very special place, and it is because of the people, because of you all, because of the administrators, the team I got to work with, with the superintendent's leadership team, as I've said before, is second to none, and serve this community selflessly and/or student-focused and dedicated to make Olathe the very best place possible. Our teachers, our administrators, our support staff, everybody pulls together to help us accomplish our goal, which is students prepared for their future. I can't say enough that I am honored and privileged to have been here and to have finished my career as a superintendent in the Olathe School District. So thank you to everybody, and Olathe will always be a very special place for me. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you very much. All right. And no executive session tonight, is that correct?
That is correct.
For the meeting.
This happened in one of those, that walked in front of the building.